Thank you for your patience.
Okay. Um, I'd like to call this uh planning commission to order. And this through the pledge of allegiance. Eyes.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In a truly popular way, which is one nation under one roof. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do roll call. Carl Granzel present.
David Smith present.
Derek Coats present.
Randy Thomas present. And Mary Gray is not. Um, obviously, we don't have any, unless there's someone on our Zoom about any comments.
I have nobody on Zoom.
Okay, so that was very quick.
Yes.
I had all kinds of things written down where I would have um. Like to engage. We need the approval of the planning commission minutes. Has everybody read them from last?
I make a motion to approve the May second, twenty twenty four, planning commission minutes.
Yeah, a second.
My second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Alrighty, on our um. Situation here, we have resolution P C two four dash oh one.
Mr. Chair, may I speak to this?
Yes.
So while looking at the process of effectively changing our enforcement methodology for code enforcement. It's a little bit complicated for a couple of reasons. One, we are going through the process first without doing the land use code penalty changes. In other words, the nuisance stuff and the enforcements involving land land use is not what is before the council on the thirteenth. That, what is before the council is all the nuisance stuff that's not land use. Because the land use stuff has to go through the state. But during the, so essentially, first, we have a process where we're doing all the non-land use stuff, so we can jump right on doing co-enforcement based upon existing code. And that will effectively happen Thursday night if the council approves the new process in which we're gonna have a hearings officer and that kind of stuff. But we omitted from that change, the land use stuff, because it still needs to go through the state. Well, not only does it need to go through the state, but if you look at the middle whereas of this uh resolution, it says a legislative change in the zoning district boundaries. In other words, if you're doing any kind of legislative change within the boundaries of our zoning. In the text of this code or the comprehensive plan may be initiated by resolution of the planning commission or by a request of the council to the planning commission and its recommendation return to the council. So essentially, we learned that really you folks are the empowerment to start this process that the council has already started in order to make changes in the planning side of all the code changes, all the enforcement changes. So what this resolution does is more or less put the city in line as to what our code says, that when you're making changes in our code as it relates to land use boundaries, the planning commission can initiate it or you can receive a recommendation from the council to start it. Well, we thought that we wanted the planning commission to support the efforts that are going on, and so the mayor directed me to create a resolution allowing the planning commission to support and uh and uh uh approve of the attempts to change the zoning and the enforcement process within our municipal code, including the land use stuff from code one fifty five. So this resolution really is about the planning commission saying, yes, we need to change our enforcement code. Get away from the concept of a municipal court that we've never had and encourage the council to move forward in their efforts. That's what this resolution is about. So this is why it's crafted and includes the language about the fact that any legislative changes needs to come from the planning commission unless the council sends it to you for you to look at and then come back to them. But this code change was really a council-initiated process.
Is that for this one that they were doing? That you're talking about?
It's for both, well, it's for the one that's at the state right now.
Is that for their land use code?
For the uh um for changing the enforcement elements of the land use code.
So.
Did I answer the, any potential question? Do I? Am I clear enough, I guess? Essentially, it's saying our, our, our code, our charter, says the planning commission can initiate changes to our land use code. Or the council can send something to you and ask you to look at it. Well, what the council is really doing is asking you, is doing both, sending this to you asking for your approval of resolution to move forward with what they're trying to do to amend the land use code enforcement section.
Just the enforcement section, nothing else, no language, no definition.
This is all about, this is all about the.
Changing it from the municipal court to the appeals officer.
Hearings officer.
The hearings officer.
Yep, that's what this is about.
Carl, was uh this passed through the city attorney to see if uh.
Yes.
We're in line?
Yes.
So basically, when I'm looking at also um. Is the idea of the, if we did do it, when I'm looking at it, is if the city council looks at the issues that they can handle easily, and if there's any part of this resolution that they would want us to uh be particularly on, so that we could be focused on one or the more critical items that needs to be viewed. And they would want us to do that, I would think that would be good.
Yes.
Instead of us going in. Because it would, it would just be redundant, you know, two or three times, same words.
Right.
If they went through and said, hey, on section one, four, eight, nine, we would like to have the council, the commission work on those. Instead of us having to be busy on all the other ones.
But in this case, the now therefore, the city of Lakeside Planning Commission hereby initiated by this resolution, the updating of penalties, fees, and administrative process for section one five five. So what that, what, what this resolution is, is doing is saying the planning commission is supporting the council's attempt to update the penalties, fees, and administrative process for enforcing the land use code.
Yes, does this take away um rebooking a C U P and makes it a code enforcement issue? Instead of a commission issue?
I would think not, because uh 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 it wouldn't go to a hearings officer until the planning commission declared and the council declared a, a violation, and then the via, then the person can appeal it to the, to the hearings officer. Then the hearing officer makes the determination. The city would make their case, the person involved would make their case, but that would happen only after they have been cited. They would have been cited until the planning commission made the determination and the council agreed with the termination that they've done something wrong.
So we reply, so we reply to C U Ps is based on uh them following the codes and ordinances as normal, but if they do not, then that may become a uh hearings officers issue then.
Well, we would cite them, the city would cite them, establish a fee, and then they could appeal that to the hearings officer to make the determination as to whether or not the city was right and do it.
Right, so I was looking at the idea of that our, our part as the city's government uh as such is from the planning commission, our parameters or our boundaries are extended just to what the codes and the ordinances are saying.
Yes.
Anything beyond that of them abusing those, but then go into some sort of a uh enforcement agency.
Yes.
I just don't want us to get bogged down and, you know, if you don't do the, our big stick. I'd like to be very strong and be build up our, all of our ordinance and stuff, so that they can be plainly looking at, looked at, go over, and then it gives us more power after they see it, if they abuse that and did some, that the officer could actually, you know, have, have a thing that we tried all of our issues, tried all of our ways to make things work. And if they did it, then it's easier to go after. Any other questions on the, that, I, I already go ahead, on number six?
No.
On uh seven, restat report, the camping ordinance from other municipalities.
Well, we gotta make a.
I need a motion and a, and a vote on the resolution, please.
So is there a motion to accept the resolution that we would, as, as said, become part of the um helping of this uh city council?
Is it one and two, or one or two?
And.
And. I make a motion that the city of Lakeside Planning Commission hereby declares its support for the municipal code updating and enforcement. And the fees and administrative process for section one fifty five to match in parallel updating of municipal code for the enforcement of said so codes.
And adopt resolution twenty four.
And adopt resolution.
P C.
Twenty uh P C twenty four.
Yeah, show one.
Oh, one.
Show one. I'll second it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. All right. Uh, now we go to the for seven.
Okay. I was requested at the last planning commission meeting to provide some research or do some research as it relates to the camping ordinance and what's happening. Uh, really, what's happening is everybody's waiting for the Supreme Court to make up the decision as it relates to Grants Pass. That's what's happening. Um, now, what I did provide you with are two ordinances. And the guideline from the League of Oregon Cities. Now, the reason why these two ordinances were picked was, one, uh, the Newport ordinance is my opinion, well, I, I, I know the city attorney that was involved in writing that one, and I think it is very, it's an excellent example. It meets the guidelines of it meets every, it meets every marker you want in your code to be. Well crafted. Um, the guideline is the guideline from the League of Oregon Cities, and the other code is for a another small community, Lowell, and has written by our city attorney. Because he also does city attorney work for other states. So um, I would consider Newport to be the gold. I would say it's, consider the the Lowell one to be a, a crafted by our current city attorney, and the town size is close to our size. And that's why I, I gave you those two outstanding uh choices, and I think whatever you decide upon, after we hear from Grants Pass Supreme Court decision, that um, that you'll find what you want in the way of language after we get the backbone decided by the Supreme Court.
Is there an anticipation that should be done?
End of the month, they're saying now.
It is supposed to be in June.
So by our next uh.
Well, it may not happen by the twenty seventh or not.
Yeah, I have. Yes, Carl, please. I see a big problem right begin with.
Okay.
And if you go to the uh uh guide, the Oregon council, the uh Oregon City, what's it, you kind of a guide?
Yep.
You go to page twelve and go to section D. And basically, basically, if you read it, and what it says is that if you make any rules or laws, you better be able to enforce it.
Yeah.
If you can't enforce anything, and the sheriff's not going to. Especially now with the impact, losing that, that train. They're not going to have any money, and they're actually having people. Okay, so it, it basically says, you know, not only that, if you make a law and they, and you have and you do find some way to disintegrate a camp. All that stuff's got to be stored for thirty days, if you want. And so I think we're handcuffed right from the beginning, because we have no way to enforce these things. Whatever we do, we have no way to enforce it. Wait, okay, wouldn't that not, and I totally agree, Carl, the idea of this, you say, but isn't that we need to do is build the resolution up to the point where there is something to back it up with something, whether, so that the, our new enforcement policy can actually achieve something, because right now, we don't have anything. We just have a lot of just words. But isn't our hope to get the ordinance and the part of it interpreted enough so that we can work that in combination with the code enforcement that we do have, so that we can make this work?
The key to the new stuff we're looking at in the way of a hearings officer is more or less changing things from being a legal decision to be in a financial fine system in which allows us to uh pursue property and value. Now, how is that going to work when it comes to the homeless and us taking away their sleeping bag or whatever? Um, um, that's gonna be a little bit different, because, um, you know, it's about, you know, getting strawberry juice from a turnip. Um, it's just, it's gonna be a challenge. I think our new co-enforcement process is gonna make it a little bit stricter. I think it's gonna make it a little bit cleaner, but to commissioners' uh uh comment, I would suggest that we don't want to over expect the ability of a fine penalty system to give us everything we want as it relates to a camping ordinance. Unless, well, it will help us as it relates to property management, because the people whose property it occurs on is a responsible party. So if it's us or the street, you know, we're, we're not. But if, if the camping is going on as being allowed on private property, then we do, it will help us with the camping issue. Will it help us on publicly owned property? Mostly not, likely not. But again, that's, it does help part of our problem, but it does not help all of our problem, in my opinion, kind sir.
Who's gonna be doing the code enforcement in the new? Who, who has the.
Well, it makes the city manager job more of administrative notification. I mean, we notify them, we give them time to do it, they don't do it. Then they get referred to a hearings officer, and at that point, if a hearings officer decides the city is right, we're given permission to put a lien on whatever the property is. So somebody is sending letters and posting, signs up on property in some cases. So there's not a, I'm not gonna need someone with a gun to go out there and do this kind of work. It's gonna be a paper trail process, because it's more of a finance side and property ownership issue than it is a strong arm issue.
No, like if.
Or work with somebody as homeless help there. Because there's no place to send a notice to, there's no place to post a sign or.
We send it to the property owner, because they're the responsible party.
But if they're on public property.
Well, if they're on public property, then you're absolutely right. That's where the issue gets a little bit hard.
And that's where, that's where our complaints come right now, is all the people, all homelessness right now on public property.
Well, my, my question is, if it's a county road, could you find the county for allowing it to happen? On behalf of the city?
I don't know. That's a lead question that I wouldn't touch.
I would, I would like to think that we got two issues of camping versus a uh officer. Obviously, hence we live from a tournament, someone's gonna be out there uh with a leaning to, and there's only so much that we can do to make them move and threaten them financially and whatever. Uh. The idea is, is, you know, the city, and we're all still waiting on the Grants Pass motion before we can even make a wise decision on which way to go. We can speculate. This is what we should do in this, and then find out we went completely in the wrong direction. So we're basically, I feel, in a waiting mode, but in the same token, looking at uh what the city, Lakeside, wants to accomplish, because I know we are not as incredibly affected but from a, uh, as far as some homeless world yet, um, in its transition areas, you know, they come and go like like on Bedouins, they come in and do their thing, and then they head on down to the rent a trove, but if we develop a place, we went to, and I, councilman um Pan and uh planning commissioner David Smith and I were invited to go down to a homeless uh organization.
Homeless response.
Homeless response.
Okay.
And listen to them, uh, and I believe the gentleman was named was Andrew, and I think we talked to uh you about it a little bit. We haven't pursued it, because there was just different. It felt like there was like a, uh, what's becoming a hot potato, and in order for us to be able to have any enforcement, we can't, and we already know that, you can't just have them go there and tell them to get out. You have to have a place for them to go. If in order to have an enforcement or have our, our ordinance made, so that there is a way to enforce that. So if we wanted to get out of one place, well, where are they gonna go? If they have, we have to provide them that. And I'm thinking, um, you know, much as I hate to think it, no one wants to do it again, it was having a homeless, a little homeless, uh. What would we call it? Homeless village.
Camp.
The homeless. Where they die by tents, if the county would open up the prison up here.
That's the state, I believe.
Yeah, the state, it's the state. Well, I mean, there's a couple, there's only very few places that we as a city area have that want, that could do it. And every place that we've looked at, and I've looked at, there's gonna be upsetness, we don't want them here. We don't want them there. And so it is gonna be a very, i- it's, it's kind of like uh when in the old days, when they were trying to find places to put certain races, we don't want you here. You know, we'll give you some land, you go over that way, get kicked out to go place else, it's just that, right now, we're gonna have to figure out that. And I believe what's gonna happen is, again, and I keep looking at too, is our decision with the uh Grants Pass Supreme Court. You know, my brother-in-law is works down there with them, with the homeless. Uh, he's very big inside all of the governmental things there, and it is a frustrating thing. Uh, it, it, and it's a political hot potato. I just don't know how much of that do we want to get into here? But as far as camping, as far as uh code enforcement, those are two different things. So we just need to separate those from camping and um uh, and even our parking, but that's another story. And that's what I have to say.
I agree with Carl that we need code enforcement. Um, we could write all the ordinances in the world until we're blue in the face, and without code enforcement, it does no good. Um. I've heard from people, they're mostly concerned about our RV parking. We have a few homeless people Tuesday night, good example here at the special council meeting, I had to walk away through her car, because when she came in, there was a homeless guy that's around the cage, who's been arrested for indecent exposure, sleeping on the bear. Okay, I didn't want her to walk by him again by herself and him do anything. Um, with that said, there's just a few homeless people which invade our playground. And RV campers, if we can stick to our ordinance, we already have one in play for no camping, for a general commercial. If we can make that a park, a day use only, that kicks them out of here. They can't stay here.
And where do they go?
Let's put them on Rachel. We're gonna make someone mad where we have to put the campers. So why not put them on Rachel?
What's the population area? Do we have a big area where they can go?
Well, Rachel, and we can also write the ordinance where you can't stay in a zone general commercial. We have it, so you can't camp in here. So residential, you have to move out of that zone in order, once you camp there, you can't camp there continuously, every day. We can write ordinances that, hey, if you're sleeping there during the day, or let's say off hours, when you're not supposed to be there, instead of moving two hundred feet there, I have seen ordinances written where they have to move out of the zone. So if they're in general commercial or here, then they have to move to a residential area for another three hours, four hours, or until they can go to where they can camp. It doesn't let them stay in one place.
I'm thinking that these ordinances and all this, this, this bunches of ordinance things, we need to condense it to a paragraph or whatever, it's gonna be so simple that it can be fault, because without someone to say, I'm gonna be the enforcement officer, but what am I enforcing? I'm enforcing what the guy, uh, the uh meeting commissioners and the council made. That this is the, this is that uh law, this is what the resolution says. And that's exactly what it says, so that we know when they tap, if they are against it or for it, it can be either implemented by enforcement, or, you know, at least we have something to base on. Instead of a whole myriad of various resolutions uh here and there, I think they have just, you know, one page. There's the ordinance for camping, and that's the way it is. Also, just, just a thing, because we're using the term camping. I, I would like to have some way to distinguish between homeless camping and legitimate campers who go out to the park or someplace like that.
I believe they, they use the term transient campers. Even that is.
House campers or RV, um, RV campers. I've seen the wording, yes, I would agree with that, so it doesn't.
Well, this whole issue that we've been having, and I remember before, was the biggest term, the biggest reason this camping ordinance is even here was strictly for the homeless. It was for really nothing else to go, because it could be, those can be easy, because those are going in, camping, and going back to work again. But the camping ordinance has been, put like an umbrella that has covered the everything, so we, we gotta be more specific to them.
Well, then unless it's on paper, we can't do anything but.
Right, until we can get it in paper. But again, we can't do anything, and we shouldn't do anything, until we hear our next step. So I think we should just, we can dwell and dwell and dwell on it. So let's just put in our mind, February, I mean, June twenty seventh is our next meeting.
Every month.
And at least between now and then, you can do your thinking, do your due diligence. Maybe some other ideas that can come up through here. Um, if those are, if that's okay. And then on the twenty seventh, let me decide what we're going to focus on. Uh. It's good. Now, you said something, uh, Rick, on the various, the two come, uh Newport and Lowell. So.
I gave you a copy of each of those in your back, in the back.
So what would be your proposal on this? Would we want to look at each of those?
Yes.
Apply them to our uh.
Yes.
That would be simple. I mean, I'm pretty sure they're very, very, very easy. We can put the word instead of Newport, we could put Lakeside on it.
If we just follow Grants Pass and said, eh, not here, and made it completely illegal.
I think it's first part of your question, I'm sorry.
If we just follow Grants Pass's lead and get where it's.
Illegal.
Because we don't have a community support system to support these people anyways, and no.
Well, we may not want to follow, because Grants Pass is a county seat. They've got, they have services that, that are available, so.
Yes.
If they, if they end up being the Southern Oregon hosts of unhoused, that's not a lead we'd want to follow.
We basically, we not want to just see what, what the avenue they took, that we can then take out. Take out and apply it to some of that decision to cover our base on our resolution. That's like, the same ideas that we're gonna do with Newport or Lowell.
Well, you'll find a lot of language in those two ordinances, Newport and Lowell. That you'll find a lot of good examples of things you wanna think about when it comes to our community.
If you look at Newport, it's a seven-page document. That's not simple.
No, and powers, I have powers which I, you're able to. You can change wording from powers to Lakeside like for anyone, and powers is pretty good too. And they are.
Terrible in size.
Yeah, it's not the amount of pages. Obviously, there's gonna be paragraphs that aren't relevant to us. But I think their guiding of that, we can actually edit that down. Take those pieces, because there are relevant parts of it that can be applicable, I found. Both of them, whether it be powers, but Lowell or Newport, they do have viable parts that would help cover our butts. Well, but the thing is, is guys, is on, on this particular issue. I, I, I like to just basically. Step that, other than if you wanted to continue discussing it, but it's, it's waiting, and then this, so let's go to the next one. Is that okay?
I think that's, I think it's reasonable.
Eight dispatching camping ordinance, local issues and policy.
Oh, I think we lost, cut down to number ten.
Yes, but I do have a question that we have coming up. As far as number ten, planning commission, June seventh, July twenty seventh. Meeting agenda topics.
You've got a full agenda.
Yeah.
I anticipate.
The slope one?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think we'll have our public hearing for what we sent to the state.
That's great.
I'm thinking that happens on the twenty seventh as well.
I have a question about the steep slope thing, that on a particular job that's right up the road. If so, I need to.
It's that three oh one Council Hill.
Yep, I need to not be involved in that discussion, since that is my job.
Three oh one Council Hill.
Okay.
It will be submitted. Now, I understand. That we have not done a steep slope permit here for a while.
Yeah.
In fact, Rob said he didn't have one while he was planner.
Right. I would like to talk with you.
And so I've asked.
No.
I've asked our, our planner to both, well, A, the actual staff report with all the techie stuff. Is done by our city engineer. And a recommendation from our city engineer. It's a two-page report. I already have it. And I can easily pass it on to you. But, so all the techie, including recommendations from the city engineer, is the primary staff report. Now, what I asked our city planner to do is to prepare a memo as it relates to process. What is the planning commission looking at here? What are their options? What are the considerations that they need to think about, whether or not to approve this? You know, what? I, I have no idea, and so I am hoping that you'll have both the technical recommendation. From the engineer, as well as hopefully a guide to process a steep slope permit. From our city planner, long prior to your June twenty seventh planning commission meet.
Would that city planner be you or?
No.
No, our contract. But no, and this one, I'm not sure how good of an example this one is, because. There has been a lot of back and forth about water retention, ponds, drainage. This one's been pretty extensive. You know, they really wanted it on tonight's agenda, but they couldn't get a plan together, engineer stamp in time to make that happen. And today he was talking about wanting to drain the water in a different direction than what was originally presented, but. I have also, I do, am required to notify all the property owners. I believe it's within a hundred feet, and mail out the staff report and the public hearing notice. And then mailings going out Monday. I've already got the draft from city planner for the letter. So Monday I will be sending out the public notice on this, but. You know, and the applicant will be here and, and. But you'll have a engineer's report and a recommendation from them, and hopefully a little more guidance from our, our planners to your options.
So we're looking at June twenty seventh for this to happen?
Yes.
Where the owner's gonna be there to.
Yes.
So is the work started?
And ask.
Well.
What can I, what can I ask?
Well, you can ask.
There, there's no work that's started.
Well. The steep slope permit has to do with, I believe, the location of the, of the wastewater system and the tank and things like that. And I don't think that has started. My knowledge, that is not starting.
So they pull a permit.
Yes. They can't get the permit until they have a steep slope authorization.
Which can be from us and the engineer.
Yes.
Report. And you, so we, I'm looking at several future sleep, steep slope issues. One of over here by Hilltop, who knows when we're gonna do anything with this erosion thing that's coming up the road. Who knows then, I mean, that might be before our.
Talked about that.
That might not be in our, in our time, but I think there's, we need to be, this is gonna be a good case study. For how to handle a steep slope issue. You know, whether it be, and my home is on a steep slope. And, you know, basically benching various things, keep the problem from the top, drizzling down. Talking to the old guys, you know, he says, the biggest thing Lakeside has is, is moving earth and. You gotta watch where the water goes, and that's one of the big issues that a lot of people aren't, aren't aware of. They're just building. Haphazardly and not really taking a surf, you know, for drain control, flood control, water diversion.
So I would expect the twenty seventh, you probably have the food ordinance back from the state to look at. Land use food.
Good.
And I would expect you to add steep slope, both on your agenda.
Gonna be enough for us.
And, and the permit is not a public hearing, the ordinance from the state would be a public hearing.
On the, after that, not on the twenty seventh.
On the twenty seventh will be the food.
Right.
Ordinance and public hearing.
On that.
And on the permit, the permit will be before you as an agenda item with a, two staff reports. For your consideration to approve a steep slope permit, but that does not require a public hearing.
Okay.
But we have to notify, that's sort of strange, we have to notify the people so they can testify.
What they want.
In a, in a way. So you may have two public hearings, but I expect you'll be busy on the twenty seventh. I would now suggest you go out looking for additional items for your agenda at this time.
Okay, so will you be up here for everything but that then?
Uh, how I used to do in council is I would just sit here quietly and listen to everything presented and all that. Yeah, just that one section, I, if need be, I can sit up.
Since you are a contractor, do you mind if we ask questions or give us helpful?
Well, I'm not like an official contractor, I am. Trying to guide him through the process of what he needs to be. Yes.
Advising.
Okay, there's not actually gonna be anything built there.
Okay.
But that's.
Yeah, that makes a big difference.
Yeah. But the only thing I've done is talk to engineers for P to B on how to get the power in and things like that for him, and then relay the information to him. But just because I've been on the job site and I know the property owner is pulling out the best idea, I'm sorry, be involved.
So we got enough on this garage ten, our, maybe we've already noticed to be the twenty seventh. The meeting already, we're talking about the hearings and the mobile truck permit. Report, and then we'll be dealt with the slope. So does the staff or commission have any comments based on these particular things before we?
I do.
Of course you do.
We have to elect a vice chair. I have given the planning, our, our city manager, the amendment. From when they signed it, we have a ninety day, and we need to follow our charter.
So we'll wait till Mary gets here on the twenty seventh, so that we can have everybody involved to get a vice chair going.
Because everyone says ninety days, and that's why Mark was appointed after his ninety days. Because no one at the time had any more than one year, which was you at the time, and you can't be both chair and vice chair.
Double is pay.
Only dictatorship.
Double is pay, paying for both chair and vice.
I will double this to this for you. No problem.
So rich now. So yes, let's, we'll discuss that, and I mean, that shouldn't be a big deal anyway on the, that's a good point there, David. You, you concur on that, Carl?
Well, I would, I would not recommend doing it tonight, since it wasn't on the agenda.
Does Mary's past term count?
Yes.
Does it?
I read, I read the code very carefully, after I was made aware of it. However, I don't anticipate that Commissioner Gray will be returning, so I would not make baser decision upon her presence.
So if she's not returning, we're gonna have an open seat. We might as well deal with this either now or on the twenty seventh.
I would suggest you not do it tonight, because it's not on the agenda. I'm sorry.
Sorry, David, I know you're.
That's fine, I'm just wondering if, does that work, have an open seat again?
Well, we don't know.
If she's coming back.
Officially. Yes, that.
That time.
We did have another person that we didn't. That we didn't let go on, but. Anyway, let's. I, okay, so we'll just put that on a, on a, but two, and then again, I'm concerned with first, we can. We'll discuss on the, on Mary Gray's situation. Okay, well, Carl, is there any else you might have had to say?
No.
Staff, I'm sorry, my, okay, David?
Is there any LOC training coming up for commissioners?
Yes.
I thought we were doing, we're gonna have something with, with Hi.
I thought, thought so too.
And I.
Was it Dave said?
I thought we all signed up and she was gonna make a.
She's supposed to be here yesterday, and she didn't show. Not for this, or something else, but let me check with Hi.
Yeah, good advice. Did you guys get that alert about, David, did you get that?
No.
About the meetings that were, and there was interested in. Okay, well, then that's why it fell flat. Yeah, apparently, I, I basically didn't have anything to say, but wanted to bring it up, but yes. As often as we can get any information or any kind of training would be great. Also, we need to plan on maybe, in between, I'd like to have some workshops. In the future, would that be a good idea? We do want, you know, it's not gonna take a lot of your time. What it does, I'm looking for times to, to bind us all as, as a, as a, as a commission. So that we're not here, some setting not knowing, I want us all to be involved with it and have the knowledge. So that there can be some sincere opinion. And that, that you feel less out, so I want, you know, try to get all inclusive as we can. Nothing heavy, just something that we can still plan on doing and feel comfortable with it.
Okay, I do have one more comment.
Yeah.
Sorry, this thing that was in our packet, Mr. City Manager, the homeless camping area.
A citizen shared that and asked me to share with the planning, mission and the council. No action.
Was it, okay.
Okay.
Awesome.
Well, without further ado. I adjourn the meeting. Next meeting, June twenty seventh, six. Got any other questions and stuff? Hope everybody has a great next couple of weeks. Excitement. Sarah, all the, all the excitement you're gonna have. David, are you still, still doing that filming thing or whatever for the ATV?
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, I'm also helping out with.